That Jerry Spino said that Altice is having some issue with their audio on Channel 79. That's creating static and other audio issues, so I would recommend any Altice customers to livestream today's government meeting by going to FairfieldCT.org backslash fair TV. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order if everyone could rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, to consider an act upon the minutes of December 6th and December 7th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
I will move it.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our next item is for information purposes only. It's for resignations to the Conservation Commission. Jennifer Hahu resigned, she resigned on December 8th. And Charles Rowan resigned on January 1st. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and let everyone know. And I do wanna thank them both for their service on the commission. And Jennifer stepped up during a difficult time for the Conservation Commission when, you know, we had massive disruption and we lost our conservation director. And she was really quite wonderful stepping into the chairman's role and helping us through the process of choosing our new conservation director, which was very detailed and took a lot of effort and time. So I do wanna publicly acknowledge Jennifer's efforts and dedication to that process. And this past year has been really hard, so kudos to Jennifer. And I'll open it up if anybody'd like to make any comments.
I'd just as well like to thank them for their service. In particular, call out Jennifer for, as you said, the work that's done when she had to step into the breach there. That's never fun and they did their work admirably.
And I'll echo that. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. Our next item, and I'm gonna, before we start, this is appointments. And it was brought to my attention that, and I believe it was brought to all of our attention on the board regarding changing the terms of our newly formed Commission on Disabilities. And I, Tom and Nancy, did you both see that email?
I did.
I did.
Right, so I, we could amend, we could consider amendment to make a change to the charge of the terms, which would stagger the terms from 4, 3, and 2, and have all the terms begin in November like are regularly scheduled, commissions do, although it puts a lot of pressure around here, or we could just do it for January like they're starting now.
I think it's worth just clarifying for those that this may not make sense to. Do you just wanna explain in a sentence or two what the background of this is?
Right, so we established this new commission and I guess we just put them all at the same amount of time. So their terms begin the same and their terms end the same. And it was brought to our attention that it may be better to stagger them so that we always have, you know, someone, in case someone wants to not be reappointed, we have people staying on who have some breadth of knowledge and historical perspective.
Is it worth?
Sorry, just by a little bit more with this is that it's a temporary commission. It's set up for three years, so the thought was to have it, everybody serve for the three years and then and the whole, as the commission grows and proves the need to have a permanent commission, then those, the next round would be appointments that were staggered.
Oh, okay. You know what? That's a fair point. I'm sorry, I was so busy today, I didn't really have a chance to take a deep dive into this. That's right.
Say it again, Julie, if you wouldn't mind.
I don't mind a bit. So it's the, so the commission is new, it's appointed for a three-year period, a temporary commission. And the hope is that as the commission starts working on issues and learning more about continuing the support for people with disabilities that the towns already established, that the need for a permanent position, I mean, a permanent commission will be established. And then the commission will work on making their commission permanent. So right now, this is just a temporary, three-year commission that we're hoping grows into permanent.
Yeah, that's, actually, that's very fair. It's kind of what I thought. So I don't think there's any amendment that's needed here.
Right.
And I do like the, by the way, I do like the idea of not doing them all in November, Brenda, just for, as you said, the amount of time it takes to fill those positions. Not only to just go through it at our meeting, but everything the administration has to do to go through and sort it down. You know, I, maybe that's something you can have the Charter Revision Commission look at, to be candid.
Actually, you know, it's fair because, I mean, people don't realize we have 300 people volunteering on various boards and commissions and it is a tremendous amount of work. You know, deciding who, figuring out who's up and who's applied, all of these different things that come into play. And it does take up a lot of time. So I would prefer to keep it as it is. We have it starting the term now. And as Julie just mentioned, it is just a three-year term. And then at some point in time, we may, may move to, the board may move to make this a permanent commission. So if that's all right with both of you.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go ahead then with the way we have it on the agenda. So can I get a motion to hear and consider an act upon the following appointments to the Fairfield Commission on Disabilities? Alder Crocker from Carolyn Drive, term 122 to 125. Patricia Donahue, Congress Street.
Can I wave to read the addresses and the things and maybe just list all their names and we can go through there? I could make that motion.
Sure.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Certainly, I would love to hear everybody's name mentioned and acknowledge each person.
Yes, I'm gonna say everyone's name for sure. Shannon Goodchild, who I actually went to elementary, middle, and high school with. Adrian, Adriana Hoffman, Ronald Piccolo, Karen Roseman, and Danielle Van Horn. So we have a motion and a second. I know we have, I believe, most people are on, I think Sean and Shannon may have had a doctor's appointment. But is that, is, is, first, is Alder on the line?
I'm on the telephone, yes, Brenda.
Hi, Alder, how are you?
I'm great, thank you. How are you all today?
We're good. Thanks so much for joining us. I'm gonna open it up. Do we have Patricia on the line? Hi, Patricia. How are you?
Patty, actually, but.
Okay, very good.
Hello, everyone.
Thank you for joining us. Is Adriana on the line?
Hi, I'm Adriana. Nice to meet you all.
Hi, Adriana. Sorry, I mispronounced you. Welcome.
Thank you.
And Ronald?
Yep, Ron, I'm here.
Hi, Ron, how are you?
I'm well, thanks.
Karen? And Daniel. Oh, hi Karen.
Hey, everyone.
And I'm not sure if Shannon was able to join us. I don't see her. So I just wanna thank you all for stepping up for this important commission. We did actually have a lot of interest in this, so that's really great. And I appreciate you taking the time and dedication to serve our community. And I'm just gonna open it up to the Board of Selectmen for any questions or comments.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Oh, well, thank you. And thank you to all of you for serving in this really important way. And, well, I only have the pleasure of knowing Patty peripherally. I've seen the incredible work she's done for the community, for her family and for all the families of Fairfield. And it's just tremendous and it's great. Patty, thank you for stepping in in this sort of more official way, although you've done a lot officially. But to serve in this capacity and to all of you, just thank you so much. It's always a lot to take on, so just appreciative and grateful and thank you all and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you too.
I just wanna wish you all the best of luck. It's an important commission. Obviously, you get to set the rules of the road as you go about putting this together, working with Julie and her team. Obviously, there's needs in town and we look forward to working closely with you and hearing your reports and seeing your progress. So I thank you for stepping up in an official capacity for the town. Happy New Year and best of luck. And just please keep us informed as you move forward.
Absolutely, thank you.
Sorry, if I could just add too, because Tom, the way, you know, you said that made me just want to echo what you're saying here and just to please consider me an ally in your efforts. You know, you will be setting the rules of the road and just happy to be supportive in any way.
Good to know.
Well, thank you all for, again, stepping up and for being here today. And of course, my door is always open, my phone line, anytime you have a question or if there's anything I can do to help you, if you have anything that you need from me or the town, please feel free to reach out. Julie is awesome, so I'm sure she will be able to handle most of that. She is a, she is a jack of all trades.
No pressure, Julie.
No pressure, Julie. Well, if we have no further comment, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations and thanks again. And I will tell you what I tell all people who come on for appointments. You're free to stay, but you're welcome to leave too. It's up to you.
Thank you, everyone.
Sometimes our meetings are very long, so people really wanna dash off.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Appreciate it.
Item number seven, it is, I'm sorry, excuse me, item number six. This is a first select woman appointment, so there is no vote to be taken here. However, I do want to announce that I am appointing Jim Brown, former Board of Finance, Board Chairman of the Board of Finance, member to replace Scott Pollock on the Employee Retirement Board. And this item does require RTM approval and we are very lucky to see Mr. Brown has joined us.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Jim. It's good to see you. So I know there's not a vote, but I will open it up to the board if you have any comments or questions.
It's a good thing there's no vote. Boy, he's gonna squeak through. Jim, thanks for stepping up again. Really appreciate it. You obviously know the importance of the board, given your work as the, on the Board of Finance with oversight of this board and working collaboratively with them through the 12 years you were on the Board of Finance. So best of luck and a Happy New Year to you and your family.
Thanks, Tom, and you too. Happy New Year and I appreciate that. Appreciate your support.
And extra thank you because you actually know the incredible work that goes into this, this board, having experienced it from a different purview. And I just think it's great that you're willing to step in and keep going, so thank you for that. And, you know, best to you and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Nancy. And Brenda, thank you for the consideration. I appreciate it. Just a recent retiree of the Board of Finance, I decided I still wanna serve the town in some capacity. And this is an excellent board, that, as you said, Nancy and Tom, it does some very important work for us. Managing and working with, whether it's Vanguard and the actuaries on the retiree benefits, both pension and OPEB, town employees and police and fire and the Board of Ed as well on the OPEB side. So, I mean, on the, and the pension side as well. So the non-certified employees, that is. So anyway, yes, as being on the Board of Finance for 12 years, I was thinking about this. There was 50 updates that I received from the Chair of the JRIB and plus it's a large part of our budget. So I look forward to joining this board and working with the, with the other members.
Well, thank you, Jim. And, you know, Jim said to me after he, his term expired on the Board of Finance, he said, you know, "I still wanna be involved. I love serving the town. And if you see something come up that you think would be a good fit for me, keep me in mind." And when this did come up, I couldn't think of anybody more qualified and experienced to step up and serve. And of course, we all know Jim and we know he does a very good job and he dedicates himself 100%. So I'm very grateful that you accepted and I look forward to working with you again.
Yeah, same here, Brenda. Thank you.
All right. Well, again, this is not a voting item and thank you for being here though, Jim. It's nice to see you.
Good afternoon.
All right. Well, you're welcome to stay, but you're free to leave.
I'll watch it later on YouTube.
Yeah, that's a good answer there, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Selling short, Brenda, what a good time we are.
Yes, it's true. It's true.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. All right, so our next item is item number seven. Holland Hill Elementary School Building Committee to hear a final project summary from the Holland Hill Elementary School Building Committee on the upgrading and renovation of the school and to hear and consider an act upon the disbandment of the Holland Hill Building Committee. And I will turn this over to Mr. Lee.
How are you?
Good to see you.
You too.
Two days in a row.
I'm telling ya. Thanks for allowing me to come on today. I am proud to announce that the Holland Hill building job is completed. To give you a quick highlight of it, we did expand and put in new classrooms to Holland Hill, which eliminated the relocatable classrooms. They're no longer on site. We did bring the facility up to current and fire code requirement with installation of a new fire sprinkler system throughout the facility. The school now has capacity of 504. And with that being said, we also installed a new HVAC system, fresh air and air conditioning system throughout the facility. We did, did security upgrades and put in expansion, north parking lot, new electrical, firing gas lines, and new cafeteria and serving lines. And new furniture were installed in the new classroom wing. And I would be happy to give everyone a tour of the new facility too. You just let me know when and I still have the keys for right now.
Okay, well, thank you, Jason. And I'm sure we all, each of us would love to do that at some point. And we will let you know and reach out to you. I'm gonna open it up to the board for any questions or comments. Excuse me.
I'll have a couple if I don't mind. Jason, was there anything in the, can you just give us the reader's digest view of the financials of this? Where it came in, all that kinda stuff? And then I got a couple of follow-ups.
We were fortunate enough, we got this project done before the COVID pandemic hit. We are gonna, planning on returning approximately 115,000 back to the town. We did come in under budget with completion of everything that was on the initial charging on the list.
So is the, that's great news. Has the Board of Education kind of accepted the building, as it were?
It has. We went in front of them a few months ago, we just couldn't get on your agenda. We withheld final payment to a contractor because the HVAC system and the gymnasium was not working properly. That problem has been fixed. Everything is online. The town actually has taken control of the building.
Right. Last thing, this was the Building Committee, one of the last ones, Mr. Quinn was the chairman of, correct?
Mr. Quinn was chairman and Mr. Harry Ackley were both members of this committee.
Yeah.
So I would definitely have to note, I'm not in this position as chairman, being as prepared, especially I'm on the chairman of another building committee without his mentorship, if you wanna call it that.
Yeah.
Tim and Mr. Ackley were big contributors for this project.
Yeah, I think, and big contributors to the town as well. Madam First Selectwoman, I just think it might be appropriate, you know, for this school, and apologies, I'm springing this now just as I go through this. Maybe we do something to recognize those two gentlemen who helped bring this school to completion. I know the building committees themselves get recognized at the, you know, with a plaque at the school, but maybe these two gentlemen who did so much for the town, particularly Mr. Quinn, I mean, Mr. Ackley's done everything for the town, but Mr. Quinn, as it relates to building committees, chaired so many of them and did so many, so much for the students of the town. This might be something appropriate there to honor those two men.
There is a memorial garden in his honor, I believe, that the PTA did establish.
That's great. You know, I thought I remembered something like that. I don't know how formal that is. Whether that's, I don't know what that entails right now. I'd love to get up there and take a tour and see that as well. Thank you, Jason. And congratulations to you and the committee for getting this done and for getting it done under budget and under tight circumstances.
Thank you.
Nancy, do you have anything?
Just that, thank you. Thank you. I know it was, it feels like, I don't know, forever ago and a day when we were meeting and Mr. Quinn was coming before us. So it's obviously bittersweet now to hear from you, but certainly glad that you were able to step in and appreciate it. So thank you for, to you and the committee.
Thank you. Thanks for all the support.
Well, the town is very appreciative of all the hard work. Building Committee work is a lot of work. It is sort of a thankless job. You know, people are holding parades for Building Committee members, but they do a lot of hard work and work that is important. And Mr. Quinn did an admirable job on many building committees. He really dedicated himself. And Jason has served as well with honor and integrity and has made sure that the town is getting the best bang for their buck and things are built appropriately. And I really just wanted to thank you, Jason, for all your hard work on this committee. You spent a lot of time and I know you put your heart into it, so thank you sincerely from me and from the town.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
So I said, we, I guess we will make a motion, I'll ask for a motion, to disband the Holland Hill Elementary School Building Committee.
So moved.
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And thanks again, Jason, really. Thank you so much.
More than welcome.
Congratulations, Jason, you've been paroled.
I look forward to coming to see, to seeing the school and, you know, maybe we can even, who knows? Maybe we can go and if the PTA doesn't mind, maybe we can, I can bring a plant and then we can plant it in the garden. Because I am a gardener too, you know, so I could bring a nice perennial for the garden.
I think I can make a call.
In honor of Tom. All right. Our next item is item number eight. To approve budget meetings for calendar year 2022. So Board of Selectmen, can I get a motion to approve Board of Selectmen public budget hearing dates? February 23rd, 10:00 a.m., February 24th, 10:00 a.m. And February 28th for the final budget deliberation vote and/or public executive session.
So moved.
Second it.
Is there any questions or anything on that?
And the understanding at this point is it's all WebEx still?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's fine.
You know, I'll release more details about the setup and everything to you, but I just wanted to get those dates on your calendar and make sure that our community is aware of them as well.
Is it possible to put those dates and the meeting dates unless it's already online? Have Jennifer send this all out as a calendar or?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we had to make sure we approved it first.
Yeah, yeah. No, 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 I do. I just.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, that'd be really helpful if someone had as a calendar invite that we could just accept. That'd be great.
Okay, I'll make a note.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, to consider an act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $63,386.3. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Nancy, did you vote? I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry if I didn't say it. I thought it.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Okay, item number 10. I'm just gonna give a quick update. Yesterday, the town distributed 7,200 test kits at Roger Ledlow Middle School. 600 kits were given out per hour, 7,200, per hour over a three-hour time period, supplying 1,800 households. 2,000 kits were put aside for our schools and some emergency personnel. The kits were given to us by the State of Connecticut's Department of Management and Homeland Security. I know we heard a lot about how this kinda went down the week before. We were supposed to get them right before New Year's Eve. We had a statewide conference call with the Governor's Office, with all the area, whole state leaders. And we didn't get them. Then we got a call on Wednesday. They weren't coming. We had set, we were preparing and we had to throw, you know, work pretty hard to set up a distribution site. And then we got a call on, I believe it was Friday night or Saturday morning, that we were getting them. So we sprang into action and thankfully, we were able to pull this together. And it actually went well, really well. I was there with the team. And I just wanna acknowledge the, our Fairfield's Community Emergency Response Team, SER, and is just like knocked it out of the park yesterday. They, I, there were so many of them there. And in addition to our police and our Board of Ed and our fire and our health department, I mean, this thing moved so. I know we had traffic. Obviously, there's gonna be traffic, but it really, really moved very efficiently. They were so amazing, you know, being there on a Sunday and getting it done on a holiday weekend. I really was so incredibly grateful for them and their hard work. I do wanna acknowledge though that some of our residents were disappointed that Fairfield only received this limited amount of tests to give out. And I was, however, encouraged that when some of our residents pulled up and said, "You know what? I don't need four, just give me two." And so that was very encouraging, because, you know, we, in an age where everybody wants to get everything for free, even if they don't need it, there were people who took only what they needed. When the state does, if and when the state announces there'll be more tests that they'll be supplying to towns, I will send that information out in newsletter update. And I just wanna remind residents, for those people who could not get a test yesterday, who are symptomatic and are, or have been exposed to a positive case, there are area pharmacies receiving test kits all throughout the town. It'll be CVS one day, it'll be Rite Aid another day, Walgreens. So there's ways to get tests, but again, if you can't get a test, we recommend that people stay home if you're not feeling well. I did work with Yale New Haven and had conversations with them before the holiday at their test site on Millhouse and asked that they expand their appointments because they did have extra appointments to fill, so they have done that. That was starting today. So hopefully, I did send that out. Hopefully, people will start signing up for those, because I know people are very desperate to get tests. We are in the midst of a high transmission rate, but most of the people in our community that I speak to, and I do speak to quite a few, that are vaccinated are only experiencing very mild symptoms. Our health department continues to advise people to take the necessary precautions, which I don't know, anyone doesn't know what they are at this point, two years in. And you can find, and I'm gonna continue to drumbeat, if those people who are not vaccinated, please, please, think about it and get educated on what the vaccine is and there are ways to go and get vaccinated. And I would just mention that people can visit vaccine.gov to find locations to get vaccinated or boosted. Um. Uh um uh budget season uh note, I would just say, uh today, I've uh been meeting all day with my. Um team and departments to review their proposed budget for the next, budgets for the next fiscal year. And we did approve the dates uh that we will just uh be having the uh budget meetings for the Board of Selectmen. And we will post uh all this information on, under the popular links on the town's homepage. Uh by the end of this month. Before our budget meetings. Uh the fill pile update, I just wanna um. Uh, I know that you know, but for our public's uh consumption. Um in my efforts to provide transparency, I'm holding a virtual presentation for the public to hear an update. Um. On the ongoing remediation in town as well, as a result of, of the fill pile. I have invited Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance and RTM. As well as our town's environmental attorney to attend that meeting. Uh with so many newly elected officials on our boards, I thought it might be helpful to provide some context and a little history. And where we are and where we are headed. The presentation will also include a financial update on what we have spent to date and projections to the best of our ability. While site testing continues and remediation is still progressing, uh the entire issue remains complicated and fluid. Uh but the, the meeting should be helpful in getting uh those people who are new uh to the process uh updated on where we are.
And can you remind us when that meeting is?
It's Tuesday, January eighteenth at six PM. And the in, WebEx instructions will be included. Um on the special Board of Selectmen meeting agenda that will be published on the town website this Friday. The Friday before that meeting, so before the um, the Friday before.
So two Fridays, two Fridays.
The Friday before the uh.
Yeah.
Um lastly, I just want to say that um, uh I sent out a newsletter with my uh year in review. Uh last week to highlight the good work of our town employees. We've had a lot of challenges over the last two years. Um and we've had some incredible new people come on board with our town, new department heads. And employees who have come with new energy and vision. Uh to improve services for our community and I did highlight uh to the best of my ability, I could have gone on a lot longer in my newsletter, but I know it was pretty long. But I am uh very, very encouraged by the energy and the, the excitement about. Uh making, changing things and modernizing and bringing a different sort of culture to our town government and. I'm just uh, I'm really proud of the hard work that, that our employees have done and have stepped up, especially during uh the challenges uh that we have faced. Uh both with COVID and all of the things that happened prior. Um so uh i- if you, if people haven't read it, they can go to the town website and read the uh update. And that's all I have uh for, for uh. My update and I will open it up if either one of you have anything and I also would open it up to public comment, if there's anybody on who would like to provide public comment.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you and thank you for all of that. Um and I wanna echo the amazing work and so I wanna start by saying something positive, which is all of that, I echo um what you're saying about. You know, the community and the hard work and I had read your. Um your update and appreciate. What the town employees do and, and how hard people work, but it's also a reminder that um. I guess to empathize, I know there's a lot of frustration and fear and concern and people are like, oh my God, we're still in this. And um there was a lack of testing available at stores and there was a lot of frustration and. And I don't wanna minimize that or underestimate it because we are in it too as elected leaders and. And as public officials here, um but. I guess I would wanna remind people that we are also experiencing it as public officials and leaders and. That we're not immune to feeling the things that, that the community is feeling, the frustration and the fear and the sadness and. And so I would just, you know, in this time of resolutions, remind people that um. You know, we're not gonna agree with everybody here, it's gonna be a scary time, it feels uncertain still. It's really frustrating that two years later, we're still in it. But we're all still in it, so if people aren't gonna agree. Um, that's okay, but let's like try to be as supportive of each other as possible. Because for whatever someone's feeling when they lash out or express concern, there's probably someone on the receiving end of that concern. So, and I say this because I've received some um. Pretty strong phone calls, some emails, um but more people expressing frustration, why not this or that and. You know, I get it, we all get it, I think, um and so I just would encourage people to remember that. We're all human beings doing the best we can in a very uncertain time. Um so I wanted to say that because I think sometimes people forget. Or lose sight of the fact that we are all human beings in this together. Experiencing our own sets of emotions. Um, two of my kids tested positive and we've been doing all the things that we needed to do and so. And I couldn't get tests and all of that, so you know, while people were expressing their frustration, I was experiencing it as well. So I say that um. And, and uh just wanted to have the opportunity to say, to say that I, you know, I do empathize as I think the three of us do with, with everyone's. Disbelief, concern, frustration, all the emotions. Um people have asked me, Brenda, separately, side note about, um and this is something that I know you've been on the receiving end of emails. A mask mandate, are there any plans to um talk about that and still it, what's the current thinking at the Board of Health or at the Health Department level? Can you just talk about that for a minute?
Sure, um, so obviously, um we have received um, you know, uh some emails, I would say, I. I would say there's probably somewhere in the area of maybe thirty or so people who have asked. Uh for a mask mandate. And I actually brought this up with the uh State Department of Public Health Commissioner on the call. On Monday and on Wednesday, when we had the statewide call and other leaders did as well. So I asked, you know, there are, there is some people asking for it and I'm, you know, what is, what is the position of our state? And the Commissioner of Public Health said she did not believe that a mandate was necessary at this time. So we, I've been following what uh public health officials have been asking me and I, I've had numerous conversations with people and we have some, you know, like you said, Nancy, um. Some, you know, some tough conversations, people's emotions, listen, I have listened to a lot of people over the last two years and people are, emotions are hot. And I get it, I totally understand. And we've had good conversations and I've said to people that. I, I understand the angst and the concern and the worry, you know, some, someone said to me, I walked into the grocery store, I saw. Someone in the store without or a couple people in the store and I just wanna remind everyone and I said this to individuals on the phone. Um. What has been said from the very beginning is you contract COVID. Um, direct contact, six feet, within that six feet, no mask for fifteen minutes. Constant talking, right? So what our contact tracers have said over the past many months. Is that the majority of our positive cases are not happening when someone goes into a grocery store. Um and someone two aisles away doesn't have a mask on. It's coming from Thanksgiving events, holiday parties, dinner parties. Uh kids having parties at their houses or just, you know, getting together with one another. Um that's where this thing uh is really spreading. And so, uh again, I, I try to remind people that um to take care of yourself and I, and I, I know people feel that if a mask mandate ha- is on. All of a sudden, the transmission rate's gonna go down dramatically. And that's not what we're hearing from public health officials and I keep trying to remind. Residents in our town that I am not a public health official, I take the guidance of public health officials. So I tell people, if you feel uncomfortable, if you walk into a store and there are people in there without masks on. Um and you don't feel comfortable. That you have a right to leave that store and go to a different store. Um but we're not seeing a high transmission rate from going in and out of a grocery store or retail store. These uh, the trans, they're primarily coming from um exposure. Either at a house party or dinner, get together, some things of that nature. Um, our health department is continuous to, continuing to say. That you should, if you have concerns, if you're not, especially if you're not vaccinated, cause you're way more vulnerable if you're not vaccinated of getting really sick. Eighty percent of the people in our hospitals with COVID are unvaccinated. And people who are vaccinated primarily have mild symptoms. Ask people if you're not feeling well and it's a weird thing, you could just have allergies and you think you just have allergies. And i- it could be COVID. Cause you're vaccinated, so you then are um susceptible to being contagious. So we're just continuing to push this information out in newsletter, obviously it's all over the news, you can't, I mean, can't get away from it. Um, we all know what we need to do, wash our hands, take care of yourself, if you're not feeling well, stay away from other people. Um and make sure you're not exposing. And uh as Sansa said, uh in South Africa where this, this variant started, starting to plateau, it's starting to go down. So we're at a high transmission rate now and hopefully it will start to curve off and go down. And everyone should take the necessary precautions to protect themselves and their families.
So I want to um.
Appreciate that, thank you. Thank you Nancy, and can I just um, I just wanna follow up on what Nancy was saying, you know, I appreciate you making those comments about. There's human beings on the other side of these conversations and, you know, Nancy, I've said this repeatedly over the last two years about the. You know, sort of vitriol that happens on so- the social media things and people get, I, I know people are very, um, everybody is here. Everybody, i- i- it's so stressful, um and it, and it's difficult, we're not, we're not back to normal. And we, we gotta taste a normal, kinda came a little there and then it was like. And so everyone is feeling uh stressed out and so I, I get it and I, I appreciate you taking the time to say that because. I, I think not all of us have to understand um that we are feeling, all of us are feeling a level of frustration. But that on the other side of the eye, the other side of the person you're speaking to is a human being. And that we should always treat each other with respect, um regardless of having differences of opinion. So I appreciate you talking about that.
Yeah, a couple of things here, first of all, Brenda, thanks for the update, both now and thanks for the year-end update, it was uh quite good. So thanks for that. Um, in terms of Nancy's commentary, I couldn't agree more. I think and, and Brenda, you followed up on it, I, I hope. Um that it goes away when COVID subsides, m- my fear is whether it will or not, there's a lot of um. There's a lot that can come through a keyboard. Uh that's a lot easier than saying to somebody's face or, or um. Communicating in a respectful way and I think we do have to realize that. And it's always a good thought, whether it be you're a public official, whether it be you're just a member of a public. Uh to wait a few minutes to send that email or post that comment. Until you calm down. Uh there's way too often that those comments. Uh get a little bit too personal and or they ascribe motive uh to something as opposed to facts. And reason and logic and I think that's something we can all uh agree on. Um and, and try to do better at and so I, I think that Brendan, your position in the position of the health. Authorities, particularly our local health authorities, uh they're doing the best they can with imperfect information. And with an evolving process. And I think sometimes people are just as confused at that level. As they are in the, in the general public with some of the guidance that comes across from the, the. Quote-unquote professionals uh that are giving us um counsel on the virus, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um if there is um, nothing further, thank you both, um I'm gonna ask for a motion. Uh from one of you to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Pending litigation, Monroe um R E L L C. Uh at all versus Town of Fairfield with Town Attorney Jim Baldwin. And.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
And Madam First Selectwoman, if I may, um A- Attorney Douglas Varga.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and it's Attorney Douglas Vargas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
disputed.
Okay, um. Uh can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanna announce uh for the public that uh no votes were taken, uh we just had an update on the pending um. Litigation and no votes are scheduled to take place at this time.
Motion to adjourn, Madam First Selectwoman.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night. That uh Jerry Spino said that Altis is having some issue with their audio on channel seventy-nine. That's creating static and other audio issues, so I would uh recommend any Altis customers to live stream.